Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Planning Commission for November 10th. Let's see, I'll call the meeting to order at this time and ask for any public comment on items not listed on the agenda, and I believe I do have one request. Paul Edgar?
Thank you. I'm Paul Edgar from the Kenema area of Oregon City and the Land Use Chair of the Neighborhood One of the things that some of us have been involved in is concurrency. I've come before you guys earlier, kind of talking about the need for some concurrency. And, you know, obviously, in Kenema, we have extremely narrow streets. More lots are opening up. We had our neighborhood meeting, and everyone said that the number-one issue in Kenema that they wanted us to be addressing for this next year was safety, and safety in our streets. They were hypersensitive with Highway 99 in the bowl. You know, it comes down from both sides. Streets, average speed is about 50 miles an hour. We have the area there zoned commercial historical. Can't get businesses to come in. It's not safe. Speeds are too great. It's just families. We had one young lady come in, a young mother, single mother with two kids. She said she will not attempt to take a left turn on Highway 99 for fear of being rear-ended. We've had too many serious accidents where people have been. John's Auto Repair says he can't get his customers to even come in. It's really, really difficult. So we've got stuff there, but we also have concurrency problems, really the main part of Kenema. When we have 12 feet of asphalt, you can't see around the corners, and we have development coming on, more development, more houses, higher densities. And as we look at this, just how many vehicles can we safely run up and down our streets? You know, I joke, I've had people talking because I've got a lot of deer out in front of my house, and then I've got my dogs sometime get a little crazy, go out onto Fifth Avenue. But cars come pretty fast down through Fifth. Now we've got Fourth asphalted a year ago, and we have all these houses, driveways, coming up blindly off of below Fourth. They can't see anything. Speeds are greater, and now we've got eight lots for sale up on Fifth Place. The density, if we get 10.6 incidents of travel per car, per day, normally in Oregon City, but when we don't have shopping centers or anybody, schools, or anything else, the actual incidents of travel are greater. So we, anytime we get higher densities, like in areas like Kenema, when we have blind, very, very blind streets, corners all over, corners of Fourth and Genong, Third and Genong, all along these areas through there, they're just major accident places waiting for somebody to die. So what we're hoping to do, and it takes a coordinated effort, is to slow the traffic down. We would like to see ways to slow it down. We think that if you continue to allow development, maybe the street speeds in Kenema need to be 20 miles an hour. We, you know, you've got to do something. You can't add more cars and still have the high speeds. So some way we've got to start. If you want to increase density, slow it down, figure out how we can make it all fit together, because we've got to figure out some magic bullet in there. But in the long haul, the Kenema Neighborhood Association want to bring this to your attention. We need to, we need to look at some overall plating in all of the areas outside of, that are outside of historic district, and how are we going to address it? Brought it to your attention before. But some way, we can't allow this thing to explode where if you take the number of, the amount of acreage that's out there, it's capable of having hundreds of houses. We know that can't happen. We don't want it to happen, and it would damn well destroy historic Kenema. So we've got to do something. And again, I'm trying to bring it to your attention, but it's part of, this is kind of the realistic concurrency issue of the day, and it may be something along the lines of saying, hey, the citizens want something to happen. Thanks.
Could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What, do you know what, have you talked to Nancy Kreshauer or the Transportation Advisory and to see what the TSP says specifically about 99 there and the streets in Kenema?
Yeah, I've done, I've talked to Betty Mum, who sits on the Transportation Committee. She, in fact, came to our Kenema Neighborhood Association meeting at my behest. I asked her and said, come on, listen, we're going to talk about it. I want you, I want you to be able to hear it firsthand, and so I didn't have to echo it around or try to say anything different than I'm saying to you guys. But, you know, the, I don't know, they tell me that the state, it's a state highway, they tell me that we, but we're making an appeal right now to the state on 99 in downtown Oregon City, and it's my belief that maybe we should be looking at 99 city limit to city limit. This, it wouldn't be a big deal to literally expand this request and kind of bootleg on to what is now happening to try to really take a new look at it. Part of this is part of a safety corridor, too, if I understand correctly.
That's correct.
And, and why is it a safety corridor? Because it's dangerous as hell. And what is the speed? Way over the speed limit. We need a crosswalk in Kenema where we have the cat bus system from Canby come through. That's the only, you know, street car or, excuse me, bus service that kind of connects into Kenema, takes people down to the transit center. But if you're across on the riverside of Kenema, you know, you can't be a kid, you got to, or you've got to be really fast. But if you take people on crutches, or a cane, or a lot of the seniors that live in that lower-income area, they're struggling to the basics of safety, just to try to take public transit. And that's not right. You know, that's self-defeating about everything that we stand for in building a community.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Powell?
Christina.
I can respond to some of Mr. Edgar's comments to give some, a little more background. And if the Planning Commission would like to, we can, in the future, set up a work session on this issue, because I think there are a lot, like a lot of transportation issues, there are a lot of factors that all mingle together, and sometimes just the process of taking them all out and laying them out and understanding how all these factors create the situation that Kenema has today and what could potentially be the solutions, takes a little bit of presentation and education and political will for our next step. But the concurrency issue is really problematic in Kenema because that is a platted subdivision. It's a 150-year-old platted subdivision, but those are lots of record. And those are single-family house permits, those are not land use actions. And so a lot of things that we can generally get through the subdivision process just can't happen in Kenema. So that, that's kind of tool, the toolbox is taken away. The McLaughlin Boulevard is not part of the Special Transportation Area, STA, that was applied for by the city for McLaughlin Boulevard Phase 1, and now we're applying for McLaughlin Boulevard Phase 2, which goes from 205 to the Gladstone Bridge. And that is a pretty intensive process through ODOT to get, and it's, what ODOT, what the Special Transportation Area is doing is asking to get, to get out of the normal ODOT road design standards process. We, basically, ODOT acknowledges that this is not a standard state highway. You're in an urban area, and we can, you, basically work from a different book, and different design book. And the, really, the only way you get an STA is if it's in conjunction with a to-be-planned improvement project. And that's how we were able to get it for this first phase one, because we have more street calming, we have some on-street parking, we have the new lighted intersection at 12th. We have all these design, traffic calming measures. So when the speed limit is dropped, it is for, on a design sake rather than, rather than just a wish to drop the speed limit. And at Kenema's end, we can do all that. That's, I mean, we can apply for the STA through ODOT, but where's the money going to come to pay for the enhancement project? And that's really more of a discussion the Planning Commission can have with the City Commission and the citizens of Kenema, because that's more of a funding discussion rather than a technical mechanism. And we can talk about the technical mechanism of getting that STA. It is in a historic district, so when that happens, there may be some consideration of what types of street calming may be appropriate in historic district and what types of street calming may not be, but usually it's a designed solution for an historic district. Just because it's a historic district doesn't mean you can't have that.
Right.
Kenema never had a highway through it. It came through in the 20s. And so if the Planning Commission would like to, we can have a work session in the future on this issue.
Well, I'll speak for myself. I definitely think that's something we want to do. Kenema is one piece of a big puzzle that, there's, there's more out there that needs to be discussed, too. I mean, the fact that development is coming in and, and there's, they're not, they're paying a percentage of the money that's being held up because we're waiting for plans. You know, we're waiting for, we're waiting for enough money to be able to build. That's the challenge. And, and there's some cases, we don't, you know, we don't, we can't make decisions based on that. We, it's different, difficult for us, because we may say, well, we aren't going to allow development in a particular area because you're not going to put enough money into this plan when there's no plan. And there's no plan in Kenema.
Correct.
So it's, and it's, so it's going to be difficult for us without a plan to demand that from development.
And the fact that single-family houses is very hard.
That's correct.
The, I know Bill Kavizman, Assistant City Attorney, has a great insight on discussing the concept of concurrency. There's kind of a colloquial concept of concurrency, and then there's the legal part of concurrency. So if we do do a work session, I'd definitely bring him involved, and he can give the Planning Commission and anybody who'd like to come that night a little primer on what it means concurrency nationwide and what it really means in Oregon.
I would like that, because Mr. Edgar's asked for this before, I've asked for it from staff, and you guys have been, we've been busy with all these plans. So all the plans are, you know, coming, coming to a head and finished, a lot of them are finishing up. So now would be a really good time to think about that. I think it'd be a two-step approach. One, I'd like to have that meeting about concurrency, and it probably wouldn't hurt to have that with the City Commission at the same time, so we all hear the same thing, what we're talking about. And then the second phase, I'd like to talk about transportation, and specifically about 99, 213, you know, some of the major entrances into the city and what we're going to be doing. We have to be on the same page. And, and so, you know, that's, that's just my thought. Gentlemen?
Mike, I agree. I think that a, that a work session that would, maybe the timing of the conclusion of the SDC contract might be an appropriate time to get together, and that way we could talk about what has happened with the system, system development charges, concurrency, the McLaughlin Corridor, I-205 and 213, and I guess speeds in general in some of the county roads that are now in the city's jurisdiction. That would be something that I would be interested in learning about.
Well, a really productive work session will most likely happen after the new year, when we have the new City Commission, so I can go back and meet with our Community Development Director and figure out when the Planning Commission wants to have a work session with the City Commission.
Yeah, and when we get to the transportation piece, we really need to have the TSP there, or the Transportation Advisory Committee, the TAC, you know, that, because we talk around them all the time, but we've never talked to them. And I think we, we all need to have that communication. So if, that's just something I'd like to see done, too. All right.
Great.
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, and thank you. Okay, anyone else like to?
I put number two, because I didn't know what it.
Well, we'll accept number two.
It's on, it says number two next to it.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kathy Hogan. I'm, I'm wearing two hats tonight. I'll do the business one, and then I'll do the plea one afterwards. South End and Hazel Grove Westling Farm Neighborhood Association has their meeting November 20th, and I'm not knowing what I'm going to do next week, so I didn't want to do it at the City Commission. I figured this'll give them a heads up. Put the date on your calendar. The Neighborhood Association has a speaker coming on November 20th. It's on the LNG Palomar Pipeline. We have the pros and cons coming. And so it would be nice if we had a showing. We would welcome other people that have any interest in it with the neighborhood. And our meeting is at Oregon City Methodist Church on South End Road, right next to the new fire station that opened up this year.
Do you have that on the website, city website?
Yes, and actually, I have all my dates on the website. I have my little newsletter that City helped me, and then now I paste and copy and delete to do it. Yeah, it should be on there, and it should be in the Neighborhood Association web portion, too. I think David Knoll, very nice man, puts it in there for me.
What time was that, Kathy?
Huh?
What time was that?
Seven o'clock. I know I forget somebody sometimes. One of the things, yeah, seven o'clock, Methodist Church, November 20th. And there will be, because this is very controversial, because they like to condemn property and take it for this, and not just five feet, it could be up to 300 feet, through rivers, 52 rivers. They're going to just lay this pipe out there, and so, and they're going to take farmland and everything. So it would be, I think, quite interesting. Okay, my second, my plea, I'm fill a stocking, fill a heart. We do fill a stocking, fill a heart year-round. We have the barbecues and all this at the Carnet Center and all this. And now we're really on the push to get anybody or somebody to adopt, I call it adopt a stocking, and we have ages from zero to three months, all the way to adults, seniors. And we, I, my personal feeling is this is going to be harder this year because of the economy and people maybe not take. So if you have, you know, something you want to do good for the community, there's 22 Clackamas Service Agents that we deliver stocks to, socks to the needy. We have all these websites, or these drop sites, and Oregon City, City Hall is a drop site, Library is a drop site. You pick up a sock, take it home, fill it, and bring it back by, you know, December 5th. Clackamas Federal Credit Union, there's the HOPS, people in, all Clackamas Federal Credit Unions, we have in Canby, we have in Milwaukee, so that we have a lot of drop sites. And Hagan's, so Bank of the West. So I'm hoping people will, because we have a big need for, I think this year is going to be even more.
And I assume that those are age-specific on the stocking?
Yes, we have a little tag that gives age-specific.
Good.
And we check them all to make sure what people put in them are age-appropriate, because like babies can't have a stuffed animal where they have a button and I, we don't want them to chew on it and, when they're teething and have, you know, that come off and they choke on it. So we want, we check, make sure that there's no, nothing that's going to cause any problems.
Okay, thank you. It's a wonderful program, and everyone should support it.
I've been doing it 12 years, and it was going before I started.
Yeah.
So that's, it's been going a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Next, we've got a couple, am I looking at the wrong one? Here we go. We have adoption of Planning Commission meeting minutes from August 11th and September 22nd of '08. Are there any changes or questions, comments?
I would only say that Commissioner Paul Carterstein was absent on the September 22nd meeting and was not late.
Who was that, then?
I almost can't remember.
Okay, we'll make that change. Anything else? Okay, then, could I get a motion and second?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the minutes for August 11th, 2008, and September 22nd, 2008.
Okay, Commissioner Dunn.
Second.
And Commissioner Stein, second. Christina?
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Chairman Powell?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to our first hearing. This is a legislative hearing, L-08-01, and the applicant is the City of Oregon City. We'll be talking about the proposed zone changes, Measure 49, processing ordinance, refuse and recycling standards, and demolition by neglect. So Christina, please.
Thank you, Chair Powell. This is a continuation from the last Planning Commission meeting, just so you have a recap for people in the audience and now online and who are watching on TV. The Planning Commission has gone through a pretty long process, starting last February, to look at citywide changes to the municipal code, specifically in the Chapter 16 and 17 Development Code. The work sessions went from February to late July, and public hearings started in August. And about every two weeks, there would be segments of the code gone through. We're getting close to the end. Tonight is some of the last issues. What's remaining is nature in the neighborhoods. We are still working on that. As you can imagine, there's lots of issues. We're working with David Knoll and our GIS department and Metro. We actually have a meeting with Metro this week, and we are making the, for nature of the neighborhoods, we're trying to see how much we're already protecting our existing Title III Wetlands Resource Overlay Zone, which is our Title 17.49, and what is wildlife habitat protection. So it's kind of an apple and oranges process, but 95% of the time, they're protecting the same area. So we're looking at how to streamline our code to meet both wetlands, wildlife habitat protection, and our existing water resource without having to adopt two codes. And it's that 5% of the area that doesn't overlap we're trying to work around, and that's kind of those thorny details. When it comes back to you, you will see a revised version of our existing 1749 to include wildlife habitat. Tonight, we will be going over the continuation of the proposed zone change hearing from, that looked at upzoning, potential upzoning for three areas. And at the last meeting, which was not two weeks ago, but, yeah, it was two weeks ago, yeah, the Planning Commission heard testimony from neighbors within those three project areas, and we're generally calling them Central Point Peas, Leland Myers, and Kenema Road, Warner Parrot, as kind of colloquial terms for those three areas. And for the direction of the Planning Commission, planning staff did look at areas that were underdeveloped near the center of the Hilltop area where future and existing retail services are available. Through that analysis, three areas kind of really came up, and those were the Central Point Peas, the Warner Parrot-Leland Road, and the Parrot, Warner Parrot, Kenema. And a lot of these, all three are, show a development pattern of county rural development that has now been completely encircled by new Oregon City urban development. And all three of them do not have sidewalks or very good pedestrian or bicycle access. And all three of them are, end up, are very much either minor arterials or neighborhood collectors throughout the large transportation network. And those realities are, in a perfect world, we would have every single neighborhood collector and minor arterial with all sidewalks, all bike lanes, and no driveways directly on the street. That is not the case. And so there, the meeting two weeks ago, I thought was very enlightening, because it was really a discussion of what can the citizens of the city gain from maybe infill development? What can't be solved with infill development? What is related more to larger systems, development fees, and the capital improvement program? And understanding that those two are two different issues, a lot like our concurrency discussion with Mr. Edgar. As we left, I'm happy that we were able to have that conversation, and I know it's just the beginning of probably a larger one with the community on how transportation issues are resolved, or is it through land use development action, or capital improvement programs, or a combination of both. Tonight, we're looking from you, direction on moving forward with any of the three areas or another area that you've identified. Our plan for next week's, two weeks from now, hearing on the 24th, we'd like to put together the final staff report and a final set of recommendations for the whole development code, the large packet you will be getting. On the 24th, we will go through the staff report briefly, reintroduce all the chapters and any last-minute issues, and kind of get the final direction from you for a December adoption, or December vote to forward it on to the City Commission, who will look at it after the new year. So that's our plan for the next two commission hearings. And so tonight, what we want from the Planning Commission is better direction from staff if you would like to move forward with any of these areas, and if so, what density. And if you're not sure about these areas, to let myself and staff and planning staff know what you, what you would need in order to make a firmer direction about the next process. I know we have some people in the audience who would like to speak and be added to the record, and for anybody listening, this record for the code changes will stay open all the way through the Planning Commission and City Commission process. So if you're still interested in this issue, tonight is not the last night to comment. You can always turn in written comments to planning staff through email, fax, US Mail, or drop it at our office at 221 Mulala Avenue, Suite 200, or show up at a Planning Commission hearing. And when it, time that this process all goes to the City Commission, you can show up at the City Commission hearings for this legislative file.
All right, so, let's start through this one, one step at a time, because that's, there's still a lot on there to talk about.
Yeah.
So what do you want to start with?
Well, I mean-
You want to start with that?
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could just go through this, and then we can kind of work down each of the following issues.
Do we have visual of the three locations that, just for the public's input? I think you guys all remember it.
No.
Okay, good.
I had to select these by hand, but this first area is, we're naming the Warner Parrot, Kenema Road area, and the area highlighted is currently R-10, single-family residential. It's to the west bounded by R-3.5, and to the south, there's some R-10 and R-8, and to the east, there's R-10. The recommendation by staff is to R-6 or R-8. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. It also goes to the other side. Let me move. Also incorporating these areas.
Okay.
The second area is identified as the Central Point Peas Road area. And this is bounded by R-3.5, which is known as T- And this is bounded by R-3.5, which is known as Tugs Landing to the north, and R-8 subdivisions to the south and east, and R-10 and R-8 to the west. And that includes the new Katie's Place subdivision also. The third area is the Leland Road, Myers. It's basically the east side of this area, oops, I used the wrong. I didn't quite get it all, but it's mainly the end of the 70s and 60s areas along Leland Road and Myers Road that were built to a standard that did not have sidewalks and bike lanes. I missed one or two, but it gives you an idea of where it was.
That's close enough, I think. Okay, so do we have any, you guys have any questions of staff before we hear some more public testimony that we can talk a little bit more about it?
I was, I had two questions. One was, I forgot when the transportation system plan was last updated.
2001.
It was updated in 2001. And then, I'm sorry.
I mean, it has been subsequently updated by the, those concept plans, but those just sections of the concept plans were amended into the transportation system plan.
Okay. And the second question was, did the city staff have a chance to put these three areas into any kind of prioritized sequence at all?
All threes have constraints and opportunities to them. I think at this level, we're kind of waiting for your direction, and we can kind of give you the pluses and minuses on all three.
Okay. Any other questions?
I guess I do have one.
Go ahead.
When developers come to Planning Commission and ask for a zone change from, say, the R-10 to R-8 or R-6, the city staff advises us that it's within the same, that the R-6, R-8, and R-10 are all at the same. Can you help me with the term of R?
Yeah, we have comprehensive plan designations that incorporate multiple zones within a single comprehensive plan designation. And the purpose of that is, you're kind of taking that look higher up of, many zones are close enough that they are compatible with each other. And R-6, 8, and 10 are under the low-density residential, that's 6,000, 8,000, and 10,000. R-3.5 is our medium-density residential, and the new R-5 that were being proposed mainly would be zoned in the Park Place Concept Plan area if and when the annexation happens would be part of the medium-density residential. And generally, when we're working within a, want the single comprehensive plan designation, there is understanding that they are more compatible with each other because they are, all three of them are single-family. They have the same housing type, single-family detached residential. It's the size of the lot that's slightly different, but the product is the same, whereas in R-3.5, you're allowed duplexes on 7,000 square feet and single-family attached rowhouses. So there's different products under the medium density. And of course, the high density is allowed, multifamily and condominium projects.
So these are all low-density comprehensive plan designation areas?
Yeah, and-
And so the question is to change their zone from the lower density to a higher density within the comprehensive plan designation? And that, and you would do that in order to encourage specific types of development?
Or you're looking at where, I mean, there's many reasons to potentially upzone an area. And R-3.5 is a median density, and we did put as a potential option. Don't know necessarily if it should be pursued, but we threw it out there. But for the most part, we're looking at upzoning within our existing low-density residential. But, you know, when we did our housing inventory in 2004, when we, the comprehensive plan was updated, as a city, we need to show that we have a varying level of housing sizes and types. And one thing that 2004 inventory starkly let us know is that we were well behind in our housing product for things lower than kind of 8,000 square foot, single-family detached. And we did a lot of work in 2004 to provide alternative housing products. We still aren't completely at our, you know, 100% meeting our housing inventory. We're better than we were in 2004. There's always an opportunity to upzone some properties to show other product and other design styles. So that's one option, I mean, to show that we're not just a single-family R-10, 10,000 square foot lot subdivision, I mean, a city. Another opportunity is, can development provide an amenity that the capital improvement program potentially could not? And that's the discussion of sidewalks. And you see that, that's mainly the Myers Road, Leland Road discussion, and somewhat the Central Point Peas, but not as much. Because that probably will be developed at some point. It will probably get the sidewalks needed along Peas and Central Point, no matter what the density is when development comes into those areas. On Warner Parrot and Canema Road, it's a little hard because a lot of those lots are kind of these long skinny lots. And so with existing R-10 zoning, it's hard to do individual development on each, on a particular lot. With a little higher density, it could make, only putting two lots together, you could get a potential project. So it just makes the redevelopment of that site a lot easier when you take it outside the R-10 zone. Basically, the existing R-10 zone, not saying that it couldn't redevelop, but it would take a lot of energy by a person to accumulate enough parcels and buy out almost the whole area to create an R-10 subdivision product to get the sidewalks and the bike lanes on Warner Parrot. So, and there's different, there's different reasons. One other discussion is, you can kind of zoom out a little bit farther, and where do we want to grow as a city? And where do we want to emphasize our density? That's a larger discussion. And, you know, we in the metro region have created an urban growth boundary. We've said that we want to keep development inside the urban growth boundary and let areas outside the urban growth boundary not allow for large lot development and retain it for farm and forestry. If that's the case, and we're staying within our urban growth boundary and we're not going to annex, which is definitely the will of the voters this year through the denial of all the annexations this fall, there's a larger discussion. If we're not expanding our city limits, are there places inside the city limits that could potentially put, allow more density? And these may not be the areas, there may be other areas, but that's something that the Planning Commission and the City Commission and citizens in general will want to take a look at. Are there other areas inside the city limits that we may be able to get some of the density that we wouldn't be getting from the expansion? One nice thing about putting infrastructure within this area, I mean, development is, there is existing infrastructure. You're not building new streets. If you're building a small, it may be a small access. There's existing sewer and water. Your infrastructure is there. And so your cost savings as a city are much better with doing infill development than expanding out. One thing with the concept plan is, it is expanding to a level of 10 units per acre. So the concept plan areas are not kind of the traditional urban sprawl, but a lot can be said for looking inside and seeing what parcels could have infill development to capitalize on all of our existing infrastructure. So those are numerous reasons to look at infill areas.
Sure. Well, I mean, you're absolutely right. I mean, we're looking at the bigger picture. The bigger picture to everyone is, we have to look now at our philosophy, land use philosophy in this state. You know, we talk about, we don't want to grow out into the farm areas. We talk about, we want to, you know, keep rural rural and keep city-city. But we also have metro requirements. We have growth requirements that we have to meet. We aren't willing to pay any more taxes through Measure 50 and Measure 5. So, you know, we're really hurting ourselves. So it's not necessarily even at this level with the city. It's at the state level, and even in federal in some cases. So we're fighting an uphill battle where, whatever we do, you know, whether we approve development or we don't approve development, whether you approve annexation or don't approve annexation, we're going to have this giant battle. But I think it really comes down to livability, and what do we as a city want to see? And you've said it very well, and I think the fact of the matter is, do we want, do we want sprawl? Do we want to, like, I just came back from Denver, Colorado, and it's the city of sprawl. It's moving out, you know, the cities are connecting. I don't want to live that way, and I know most of you don't want to live that way. So I, you know, I think we all have to tighten our belt a little bit and decide, you know, where are we going to infill? Because quite frankly, if we're not going to move out, we're going to have to move in. So, you know, it's a tough decision, and we're going to have to look at that. So with that, we'll move on. Sorry, that was my soapbox for a minute, but go ahead.
I just have one other question here. Is your, these own considerations, we're looking at adopting that as part of the city code?
Yeah, as part of this process.
Right, so this is not like a zone change where-
No, it would be legislative.
All right, okay.
The reason is, if this, these areas, if not done legislatively, would never be done individually, because whenever you have lots of smaller parcels, you're never going to get all the property owners to pay for it.
Right, so we're looking at making a, basically, a citywide-
Yeah, a citywide legislative zone change. So as part, the technical aspect is, as this package gets sent up to the City Commission, if the Planning Commission wants to move forward within these areas, a zone change, a map amendment to this, either a comprehensive plan map amendment if they're moving outside of the comprehensive plan designation, or a zone change app amendment would be followed on with this, and be part of the ordinance.
Right.
And that did happen in 2004, as part of the comprehensive plan update, too.
Okay, well, if there are no more questions of staff, why don't we hear from the public? And I've got one from Kathy Hogan.
Oh, I just had a question. Are those maps on the website?
Yeah, unfortunately, we didn't get, chance to get them at copy tonight. But if you go to the Planning Commission packet of two weeks ago, it's in that. And if you can, if you just click on the Planning Commission page on the bottom left-hand side of our website, www.orcituy.org, and go to the Planning Commission packet of two weeks ago, you will get the maps on there.
Okay, that gives other people a chance to look at this stuff. And the only thing is, is how many of some of those lots, if they're really narrow and stuff, are they going to have to take a house out to get a road in to change it?
It depends on the area. The Canema Road or Peas Road, well, Peas Road area, well, some of those lots, one or two combined, they'll make a subdivision. Question is, what density of subdivision is it going to be, 6, 8, or 10? The Canema Road, Warner Parrot's a little bit different because they are these really long, some of them are long skinny. And so what would, what happens with those is oftentimes, a developer or a bunch of owners get together and consolidate their land and keep the existing homes, and they become new lots in a subdivision. So you might see that where there's a subdivision, and the existing house just becomes a lot in that subdivision. So it depends on what area we're talking about.
Well, they're not going to become a flag lot, then?
The only place I would potentially do flag lots is Leland Road and Myers, because I just don't see how there's an opportunity to get access as an alley or a small constrained street in the back.
That really, to me, tends to bring on conflict with people because they don't want to share it, and they have too many cars and park in the way. And I think conflict is what we don't need in the community, and the police have to take care of it. You want a cohesive neighborhood where everybody gets along, and they have their own property to get on it without having to go next to somebody else. And you have to share something. I think that's a really poor idea, very poor idea. I know for a fact, my daughter had that, and she had to go ask the neighbors more than once to move cars so they could get out of their own, their only port, their Porsche where their cars were parked off the flag lot. But it's split, and it really makes for, you know, conflict. So it would be better not to have that, create that kind of conflict. And in doing this density, I think the road should be taken in consideration, like in Canema, that they have access to get off and on into these developments, where they're not going to have conflict with another vehicle.
Thank you. Paul Edgar?
Thank you again. Paul Edgar from the Canema area of Oregon City. We, Tim, you brought up, like, county roads and the implications of it. But when we take a look at this whole hillside area right there, much of the traffic, by basic nature, filters to South End Road. South End Road in itself is a weight-restricted road. Traffic level last year was close to 10,000 cars a day. It's reaching its capacity, but more importantly, it's in a slide zone. So as you start building density and incidents of travel with no jobs locally, we know 80% of all of these new home buyers are commuting about 20 miles to find gainful employment to make the payments. So as we create more housing units on this hillside where the only natural area for them to get off of it or get out of it, well, maybe they take Lynn Avenue. And that's not a good buy in itself. But you got Molalla and 7th, you've got Lynn, and you've got South End Road. And none of them are what I call major arterials. Maybe they act as that. But I caution you in building more density in those areas until we come up with a comprehensive plan, transportation plan, that addresses the global picture of transportation on the hillside. And right now, it's not there. I don't see it's going to be there for a long time. Somehow, we've got to get it addressed, and it's part of the big picture. And right now, if I was sitting on, in your chairs, I would be not wanting to add more density, more problems, more concurrency problems to our roads until we have this other phase or important part of the chessboard addressed.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? This time? Okay. So let's bring that back, bring that back up to, go ahead. Please introduce yourself, if you would.
Yes, I'm Ingraham Rickenbach, and I live on Warner Parrot Road. I'm very concerned about more density coming on Warner Parrot. We live the third house from South End, and it's very difficult for us to get out of our driveway. We do have a long lot. When my husband bought the property, it was a third of an acre lot. And a lot of them on both sides of the road were that way. And now they're putting in flag lots. And I'm concerned for the safety of the children on the road, because we have two schools and we have the park, and we don't have anyone who polices the traffic on that road. So by the time they supposedly stop at South End by the store and turn left to come up on Warner Parrot, they're already past the speed limit by the third house. And it concerns me that they would fill in more, because those people are going to have to go someplace, and our road's too busy. And so I know that we need filling in someplace, but I would ask you to not consider the Warner Parrot area as an area to add more. We do have sidewalk, we do have bike paths, and we don't need more development to pay for that. And it was developed so that we had, at first, we had the sidewalk on one side and the bike lane on the other. Now, and the sidewalk had the parking, and now we have the sidewalk and parking and a bike lane, and then two lanes of traffic and another bike lane. And so people are walking in the bike lanes, and there's just too much going on there with the people going- with the people going to the schools and going to the park, and I think it would be way too dangerous.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, let's talk amongst ourselves about this for a bit and see if we can come up with some direction to staff. Commissioner?
Yeah, I thought that Christine echoed the thoughts that I had in my mind after the election when we saw that the citizens of the community don't want to annex additional lands into the city's area. We have to, we have to abide by the metro regional government's land use goals, and that is for more density. I don't think that, that development itself should be paying for the road improvement over the sidewalks. I think that, that there should be some mix of capital improvement that goes along with that development. So I am in favor of including, including these three areas as part of the ordinances that we're changing. And I would, and I would recommend that, that we stick in the low-density comprehensive plan designation. And so I would say at the, at the highest density, stay with R6 rather than going with That would just be my preference.
For all three areas or for?
I guess the Central Point Peas area does border some R3, if I remember the map. I would have to look at that a little further, but perhaps that could be, there could be some feathering or buffering of R3s into some R6 or something like that.
Was R3 proposed for all three areas? I thought it was just one area.
No, the, the Central Point Peas, because it was buffering existing R3, and most of the people that did come two weeks ago did speak from that area, and I do know that a lot of their comments said nothing or R8. I mean, if you're listening to what the, the property owners were saying, I mean, that's definitely what I got from them. The Myers Road, Leland Road, you know, that's a really hard one. You know, it's, it, both not doing anything and upzoning, you have potential bonuses and drawbacks. I mean-
Was, was mixed-use residential considered for that corridor?
No, there was no, mixed-use corridor was not proposed for any of these three areas. That, you know, that was brought back in 2004. The community resoundingly commented back to us that they did not want, you know, one thing I would recommend, if the Planning Commission still feels that the city should pursue finding services in the South End area, as part of your recommendation to the City Commission, make that, you know, a clear recommendation and let them know that. But, you know, I think until there's direction coming down from the City Commission on a staff level, we're waiting for that.
All right. Commissioner then?
I would concur with that. It's, we're kind of in a dilemma here where we've, we're not annexing right now, and yet we do need to have the density. And the problem is, you know, we don't want growth, but at the same time, we want a place for our kids to grow up and our friends to join us if they choose to move it here. So we want all this, and to me, this is the best shot we have to improving the infrastructure and taking advantage of the services that are already there. So at this point, I'd like to look into this possibility of zone change for this area.
Okay. I, you know, I was somewhat disappointed in the election in the fact that the job opportunities, you know, regardless of the fact that there's a lot of people moving in, or the job opportunities, which really would benefit this community, I felt, you know, really was the biggest hit to the city. I think the Central Point and Peas and Kenema Road would probably be the most logical steps in R6. I also think, probably to most people's chagrin, I'd also think we need to look at some sort of commercial or retail down in the South End area. I know it doesn't sound good at the moment, but with, and now the gas is going back down, maybe it's not sounding as important, but I still think it's important that we look at that to really make that a cohesive area and make it part of a cohesive community. I'm less concerned, I'm, I really don't think the Leland Road Myers fits right now with this. I understand what we'd like to do there, and it's such a limited space, and it's, geographically and the way everything's set up, the lots, it just doesn't look, it doesn't look like it'd be, unless somebody could come in and take that whole area, it doesn't look like it would be a good benefit to the, to the city. So I guess what I would look at is number two and number three, or number one and number two, Kenema and Central Point, go and look at those. And with the, with the comment to the City, to the City Commission that we really need, if this is in fact approved, we really need to put a comprehensive, again, we'll talk about it, a comprehensive traffic plan together. Because we've got to have a plan in place, and, you know, Leland Road, that, Leland Road Myers 7th or 5th, it's a horrible, it's horrible. No, it's not wide enough for even emergency vehicles to get through, so I can't even imagine trying to expand that area. I hate to say it, but Central Point's not much better, but it does have, it does have sidewalks and it does have a reasonable-sized street. But I really think we need to really put a focus on with the Transportation Advisory Committee and the City Commission and then Planning Commission and really work to develop a comprehensive plan. And if it requires looking at how we're going to fund this thing, I think we should, we need to make that a part of this discussion as well. So, any other comments? Sounds to me, so my issue is, you know, Leland Road Myers, I don't know what you think.
Well, the way I'm looking at it is, is, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? If you don't do anything to encourage any kind of a change, you're going to get what you got, or make it difficult for somebody to change what we do have. And by, by upzoning these areas, I think you are sending up a signal that, look, these areas are areas that we want to have developed and areas that we want to work with you on developing. You know, that said, I also agree that there needs to be a holistic look at transportation across the city. And, and you have to do all those things at the same time, although they're not going to happen simultaneously. You want to have all those irons in the fire as you, as you work through these issues.
Okay. So you, you think all three, all three?
I would go with all three. I understand the difficulty of moving, but I would agree with you, if you don't make some change in the zone, that, you know, you're not, you're not going to have anything happen at all. And even with changing the zone, it doesn't mean you're going to have something happen. It just gives the potential, so, you know, I would go for all three, I think, at this point.
Well, and again, I'm, I'm happy to look at all three if we can have a comprehensive transportation study done that says, you know, this, this is the priorities, and maybe we really need to think about our priorities. And I haven't had the opportunity to, and maybe I will make an opportunity to go sit in with the Transportation Advisory Committee and get some input from the Planning Commission because I don't think they're getting it, so.
One thing I could do is, as part of the staff report, I mean, this is just a recommendation to the City Commission, you're not voting on an ordinance, and you're not making a final decision. So while you are sending all three areas up, I can, in the staff report, look at the dissenting issues, and, I mean, keep that up to the City Commission. You will have a work session with them on the code changes, maybe December or January, we're not too sure yet. Probably January now that we have a new commission. And you can, we can take, of all the codes issues, we can kind of, this Planning Commission can highlight the things they want to spend most time talking about, and this can be one of them. And with the recommendation, the City Commission can disagree and take one area out, but I can easily put the dissenting comments in.
Sure.
Can I also ask if, would it be appropriate to have the Transportation Advisory Committee look at these three areas in terms of transportation and then to provide that information, say, back to us as we consider this further?
I don't think they'll get it before the 24th, but they can definitely be brought into this process.
That would be great.
Even if we could get, even if we could get a, and I wish I knew their next meeting, but even if we get some verbal comment back, I don't have to have it all in writing, but, you know, that they, yes, they understand this is, this is something they need to review, I'd like to feel confident that, that, you know, the people, the citizens that are responsible to write our transportation system plan understands that this is a, you know, that they're on the same page as we are, and that this makes sense to all of us. Because, you know, quite frankly, if they come back and say, you know what, that's just not going to work, okay. I mean, but convince me, because I want to know. I mean, staff convinced me we should look at it. TSP or the Transportation Advisory Committee may convince me not to, you know. So, you know, at this point, at this point, it makes sense to go further, I think, and to at least review it and go further to the, at least to the City Commission for discussion.
Well, I'll contact Nancy Kershaw, and we'll get them the packet, and hopefully, as soon as I hear from them, I'll let you know and put it in the record.
That's great, and I'd be, I'd be happy to, if I could, you know, go, I'd be happy to go sit in on that if need be, or I'm sure anybody would like to do that.
Great.
Is that clear enough?
Yep, that's clear for me.
All right, next.
All right, the Measure 49 Processing Ordinance and the Refugees and Recycling, Laura Butler from our planning staff is going to be presenting these.
Okay.
Good evening. So before you in your packet, you'll see Chapter 2.6 of our code. We're starting off the Measure 49 claims. Staff has proposed adoption of Chapter 2.60 of the Oregon City Municipal Code to establish a procedure by which property owners of private real property located within the city of Oregon City may file claims pursuant to Chapters 1.9, 195 and 197 of the Oregon Revised Statutes as amended by ballot Measure 49. The Measure 49 claims give landowners the right to build homes as compensation for land use restrictions imposed after they've acquired their properties. A formal processing procedure has not been adopted by the city since adoption of Measure 49 in December 2007. Adoption of this chapter provides clear guidance on how Measure 49 claims will be processed, including the information needed to process the claim, the review of the procedure, noticing requirements, as well as the processing fee. Staff recommends adoption of the language before you, with the addition of the title for Chapter 2.60, which is currently not included, being Measure 49 Claims, Processes and Standards. Are there any questions of staff regarding this?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
For background.
Sure.
Can you explain for me the relationship of Measure 37 to 49? Just as some general background.
Sure. Did you want to? In Measure 37, it was a measure that was passed that provides compensation for property owners, say, if you could have done something to your property and developed it to a certain standard, and as a city or whatever governmental jurisdiction changed the rules, so now you can no longer develop it to that intensity of standard. Measure 37 was a way to compensate those property owners for that loss in development of their property. Compensation included reverting back to the original standards that you could apply for or you could have done when you purchased your property. Measure 49 was adopted as an amendment to Measure 37, and specifically, it allows claimants to build up to three homes if they were previously allowed when they acquired their properties. Four to 10 homes if they can document a reduction in property values that justify the additional homes, but they may not build more than three homes on high-value farmlands, forestlands, and groundwater restricted lands. So claims are based on regulations that restrict residential uses of property of farm and forest practices. So Measure 49 was really just an amendment that said, if you have a reduction in property value because of our zoning or something like that, then your result would be you could build homes, and you couldn't build industrial or commercial if you could have done it before. It just goes back to the homes.
Thank you.
So did all of the Measure 37 approved claims move forward into 49 approved claims?
Correct.
And do you have an idea of how many we're dealing with?
Inside of Oregon City, we have yet to have one. Measure 49 is rarely going to be inside a city limit because most properties have been upzoned over time. And so if you bought a property in the 50s or 60s and had a certain allowed use, by now, you're probably allowed more. Whereas in converse, if you're in the, if you were outside city limits in the county, you may have been downzoned with, especially once the adoption of the Oregon Land Use System. So this is required, we need to have a process. This may actually never be used or may be used once.
Right, so if we have a, if we have a property that's currently in the county and gets, and gets annexed into the city, does that, does that Measure 37 slash 49 carry forward with that?
Well, it may, but they're going to be zoned to R10. So what the density they were allowed in the county is probably one unit per acre.
Yeah.
That was most of the county zones in the 50s and 60s, so now we're like three to four units per acre now that you're in the city. So you're almost always upzoned.
Yeah.
There may be something out there. For the most part, it's, it's meeting our requirement to show a process for a Measure 49 claim.
Looks fine to me. I don't really have any other questions than that, I just wanted to make sure that we-
I just had a question on 260050, I guess you'd call it. It has, will give notice essentially to people within 100 feet. Isn't, for other things, it's 300 feet?
It is, but this is the agreed-upon language set out by Measure 49.
Okay, so you're just taking it from the-
Yeah, we are taking the model code from the, some of the ordinance.
So program manager would be-
It's defined as-
As the person who's doing it, but who would that be?
Dan.
Dan?
Our Community Development Director.
All right, that's kind of what I thought, I just wanted to make sure we-
You know, whenever there's things like 100 feet, we generally, as staff, defer to 300. You never get, as Bill Coviseman, Assistant City Attorney, says, you never get in trouble for overnoticing.
Yeah.
So if we can, we often just default to the 300.
Sometimes you get a few more people at the meeting, too.
Yeah, that's true, exactly.
Also, is this appealable on the E, it says the City Commission will make its final determination within 180 days. Is it appealable to some or not?
The City Commission's decision is appealable to Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals, so it goes out of our jurisdiction into state courts.
So we don't mention that here?
Um.
It makes it look like that's the end on E. I'm looking at 260, oh, 260050.
We can add it, you know, we'll take a look. This is, that's an interesting question because if you were in Chapter 17 or 16 through the land use process, we have a 1750 with our, which is our procedures chapter, and it assumes the process to get into Luba.
Yeah, I assume.
Yeah, so this is Title II.
Yeah.
We'll talk to our attorneys if we need to, I mean, it will be processed through Luba. Adding this line is more of a readability outline.
And I just have one question, because I just don't know the answer to this, but what's the common law vested right?
There was a big issue with Measure 37 and Measure 49 of who, who has a vested right to be able to file a claim. So if my grandparents bought a piece of property and it was before zoning or something, and it got passed down through the family, does that mean that I have a right to file a claim? Because when I maybe acquired it, it didn't allow, you know, maybe it didn't allow what it did when they first acquired it. So do I have a vested right? Or if it's through marriages or things like that, what gives you the authority to file a Measure 49 claim?
There's been a lot of litigation, or like, if you go to a revocable trust, or there's been all that. And so that kind of went through its own process of how do you define that? And I haven't kept up with every one of those.
So by reading this, it sounds like the, if the City Commission has, has the final say, if you will, on who has that right?
No, there's, it's been adjudicated in court since 37, and there's been better definitions on who has common law vested rights.
Okay, so, so it's a hearing on an application for a common law vested right. So that's just the, that's, once it's been decided who can, that's the application for it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's more clear, thank you. All right.
All right. Next section of code is a new one as well, Chapter 17.62.059.
Chapter 17.62.059. And we have a revised version from what was sent with your planning commission packet. We'll provide copies to you right now. It's entitled Refuge and Recycling Standards for Commercial, Industrial and Multi-Family Developments. There's only a few changes and I'll go through them in just a minute from what was included in the planning commission packet. In an effort to support businesses as well as multi-family development, planning staff proposed revisions to the Oregon City Municipal Code to require a thoughtful approach to refuge and recycling enclosures. The proposed code amendment requires applicants to develop a solid waste and recycling enclosure that is compatible with the design and circulation of the site in both short and the long term. By addressing these issues in the municipal code, developers are aware of the city expectations and create a space which is safe for the public as well as the local collection firm. We're continuing to work with Rick Walterhalter, Rick Winterhalter at Clackamas County as well as our local collection firm, which is B&amp;B Leasing, to create a code amendment that addresses design, location, size and maintenance of the refuge and recycling areas. Currently, the Oregon Municipal Code includes only two standards directly related to refuge and recycling enclosures. Though the code alludes to the standards relating to design and such sections as compatibility, the only direct standards required that default to refuge and recycling are that they are enclosed, screened and do not hinder travel lanes, walkways, streets or adjacent properties. The proposed code section, Chapter 17.62.059, entitled Refuge and Recycling Standards for Commercial, Industrial and Multi-Family Developments, would provide an efficient, safe and convenient refuge and recycling enclosure for the public as well as the local collection firm. All new development, changes in existing property uses, expansions or exterior alterations to uses other than single family or duplexes shall include a refuge and recycling enclosure. And the code goes on to read that the areas shall be, A, sized appropriately to meet the needs of the current and expected tenants, including an expansion area if necessary. We've seen some development over time where it was planned a little bit smaller and as they, their tenants change or their needs changes, they need to increase. And sometimes that increase includes losing a parking stall or interior parking lot landscaping. So we want to make sure we look at these things at the beginning so we have potential areas to expand if we need to. Section B is, requires that they're designed with sturdy materials which are compatible with the primary structures, which we allude to in compatibility, but it's not specifically stated anywhere. That they're fully enclosed and visually screened, which is one of our current criteria, located in a manner easily and safely accessible by collection vehicles. It's a new criteria to make sure that B&amp;B leasing or any collection firm can actually access the recycling and refuge. We want to make sure they're on a level hard surface designed to discharge surface run, water runoff and avoid ponding, that they're maintained by the property owner and are used only for the purposes of storing solid waste and recyclable materials. And lastly, that they're designed in accordance with Oregon Municipal Code, including Chapter 8.20, which is our current code, which really talks about service of these areas, not the design of the areas, as well as all city adopted policies. An associated policy is additionally proposed for adoption through a resolution outlining specific size, material and signage requirements. So this is getting into the more specific details. So in our code, we have something just general that talks about make sure it's safe and that there's enough space for haulers to reach it. And then the more specific requirements would go, be adopted through an alternate route of a resolution. The requirements are derived primarily from the Clackamas County Code and implementing dimensional standard requirements of B&amp;B leasing in the beginning of the development process. The policy includes an exception section which permits modifications from the development standards which are consistent with Oregon City Municipal Code, as well as the collection firms operate, operation methods. Adoption of this section would result in the deletion of Oregon Municipal Code, Chapter 17.52.090C9 and 10. Those are our current two sections of our code that talk about trash enclosures. And they're actually under our parking lot landscaping requirements. So now that we'll have our own section, that's probably a little more clear anyway. This amendment only refers to the design of the refuge and recycling enclosures. Again, that policy will look at more specific standards and Chapter 8 will look at how that they are, how often that they're serviced and that they're serviced available for them. Before you, you should have received a copy of the amendment as well as the associated policy. The amended versions provide a clear direction and only include requirements for the design rather than the service, which is the change from the, the one you got in the planning commission packet. Are there any questions regarding this amendment?
The design rather than the, say that again?
In Chapter 8.20, we have, of our municipal code, we talk about the franchise agreement and B&amp;B leasing.
Okay.
And that really talks about that we as a city will provide services or have a leasing agreement, so all these properties can get recycling service and trash service and things like that. So that's more the service of the, of the enclosure, whereas we'll be just looking at the design.
Okay, the differences between these two, the one we had and the one that you sent...
There's a couple of chapters, and again, they just talk about service. One of them says that each property shall be serviced.
Oh, okay.
You should...
F.
Yep.
Reset, oh, I see, okay.
Exactly.
I was going to ask you about that, so I'm glad you said that.
You may be seeing amendments as a side note to Chapter 2.80 regarding services in the future. We were recently sent information from Metro who adopted new standards for servicing for cycling and trash areas. So in the future, you may see potential sections to that, or amendments to the service section, but for now, this is just the design portion.
Well, the only, only thing I would look at is the way, just for consistency, purpose on the first one is, you know, on the 059 is the purpose intended as provision is. And then on the second one, it just says purpose and then efficient, safe and conveni- I know what you mean, but it would, if it could be, you know, the purpose is efficient and, or I don't know how you want to do it, but...
Great.
Just consistency between both of them, so they read similar.
Great.
I think that was the only... Oh, go ahead, I may have another one.
Well, my question kind of relates to, I call it grandfathering. You have a, let's say we have an existing apartment house.
Mm-hmm.
And it's got a sized, too small receptacle. And I realize that's typically a code compliance issue, but I can pick out a couple of them specifically where you, you know, you pretty much can go do your furniture shopping outside this receptacle.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess my question would be, will this have in some impact on the ability to enlarge that area so that that wouldn't happen? And you have in here, under E, well, I think it was the new one, under E, enclosures and gates, all areas around the receptacles shall be kept free of obstructions and accumulations of waste. And I assume that's what we're talking about there. And then it's a code compliance issue, but my question, it just gets around to, will they, will some of these places be grandfathered in and will not have to do that, or will they have to meet this requirement?
That is a $64,000 question and we're working with our city attorney. We, what I like about this process is we have our code criteria, which is nice and succinct and I can write a staff report that doesn't take two days. And, but we have all this nitty gritty. This will be adopted by the city commission as resolution, so we're trying to work with our city attorney, so Nancy Bush and code enforcement can lean on this because it's an adopted resolution kind of outside of the land use process and it's also tied to Chapter 8. At what level can she do that? That's what we're working with our city attorney on, but we'd like to have, when we have a, in a perfect world, there'll be a nuisance apartment that has a, you know, basically just a B&amp;B box that, with everything. A nuisance is called and Nancy can work with the property owner and use this as her guidelines. She may not have the ability for them to absolutely, you know, meet this 100%, but what we've never had is kind of a path to resolution of, to get out of the nuisance rather than just what, anybody could look at it and say, oh yeah, you need to screen it and do some things, but you can't tie it back to anything. But this resolution will, will help a lot. And so that's what we're working with our attorneys of what, what needs to be done to allow Nancy to utilize this? Because it is, the purpose is to be also outside the land use process.
Well, and I'd, I'd like to carry it even further to, with a franchise agreement and put some, a little bit of weight on the carrier or the, the, the B&amp;B leasing, if that's who it is, and have them, if they can't pick something up, you know, that's solid waste that's outside that area, that they contact, directly contact code compliance.
Mm-hmm.
So that we can resolve it and make that part of their, their contract.
And that very well, and I'm, I don't have the full background in the process of the, of the licensing. And Nancy, our city recorder, is out and she's been involved. And I think that's what we want to do when this goes up to the city commission, is to bring this up and say, how, how much do you want to utilize this outside of the land use process and how much can we utilize it outside of the land use process? That's our intent.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, obviously there's a reason we're doing this. We want to make our, our city healthier and a better place to look at and if, let's, I mean, let's put some teeth in it and let's see what we can do.
Yep.
I appreciate what you've done. It, it covers most every, all of my concerns, other than I just want to make sure there's some teeth in it.
Yeah, and we'll get proportional upgrades too with all site plans and design reviews and...
So what's great about this is minor site plan, you know, if, like Laura's doing an apartment on Pearl Street, and if they did have just the B&amp;B, you know, load box and nothing else as part of the minor site plan, we could ding them for, maybe for the proportional upgrade, all they're doing is putting a fence around it. But that's great. I mean, we can get them based on what they're proposing with these minor site plans, because a lot of these apartments at some point are going to be minor site planned because they're going to be rehabbing and we can ding them then, let alone ideally what we can get out of the nuisance process, so.
Well, it's, I mean, it's a benefit to them.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a benefit to them as well as it is to their neighbors and the community as a whole. So it makes perfect sense to me. Okay.
When we say visually screened, does that just mean a fence?
It can mean many things and the reason we utilize that terminology is so I can make findings. You could do landscape screening, you can do fence. The idea, I mean, depending on the product, there may be a different solution. If you're in a very urban area, you may be just using a brick wall and a, and a fence. If you're in a, another area, you may use landscaping and a fence. I mean, it depends on what's appropriate visual screening.
Mm-hmm.
And to the level of compatible materials. So if you're just doing a CMU wall, that, that's not compatible materials, but maybe if you do a CMU wall and it's really, really nice landscaping buffer area, maybe in combination, that's okay. You may not meet the material, but you've adequately screened it. So these allow us to work with a developer to come up with a solution for that site, but at the same time, say we have a, a threshold and we, and we have the ability to say no to that CMU wall.
So you're, you're actually providing some guidance on what that screen's going to look like?
Yeah.
It's not just going to be a, a flat, smooth, concrete wall that somebody's going to have to look at?
Well, in some situations, that might be okay. If it's integrated in part of the building, it's a very urban setup and it's just, maybe it's, you have a stucco building, you have a little addition as a stucco that's part of it, you might not even realize it.
Well, if it was split face, you know, that's going to look a lot nicer than a bare concrete wall. And so that's what I'm trying to get at, is the guy going to be able to, to say, I need to save some money, it's just going to be a wall.
What's nice about the compatible material is if it's not the exact same material as the building, I mean, if you use the exact same term as the building, we generally say that's compatible. If you use something less, then you need to mitigate it and it's usually by landscaping. And as staff, we can say, you haven't met it, you haven't met it, you haven't met it, you've met it. Because we have an alternative, which is use the materials that are made up at the building.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks.
Well, and design review takes care of a lot of that on the new things too, so...
Right, yeah. But until now, we haven't, when you have a really vague criteria, sometimes it's really hard to say, you know, I'm going to deny you on this vague criteria. So the more, the more, more code we have that allows us at least a threshold that we can always fall back on, it's nice. It's a lot, it's a lot easier for us.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
And last.
Well, last, and I apologize, there was a memo to you on demolition by neglect, so you weren't able to read that, so I may just do a brief synopsis of what was in the demolition by neglect memo. It was pretty much an addition to what you saw this summer, but I wanted to just give you a little background of where we are about demolition, denial and demolition by neglect.
Okay.
We started this process, the historic review board, ah, the first of the year of 2008, really addressing kind of a hold in our historic overlay zone, which is all the historic review board can do is delay the demolition of any designated historic structure up to 180 days. And this has been, just has, it's been useless in the sense that someone can just come in and game the system and wait. And you just, you turn in an application and if you turn in a perfect application and the historic review board wants to, they could approve the demolition on the first hearing. And that often happens when you have a small accessory building that's on a 45 degree angle and we all agree, you know, it's okay and it's not historically significant compared to the main part of the building. Those get approved the first night of the hearing, but other ones, the applicant just waits it out. They just wait the historic review board to deny it and they wait the 180 days and then they go in and get the demolition permit from our building officials. So it really wasn't serving anybody to have this process that all it did is just notify people in advance, so the demolition's going to happen. And so we went to the community and I sent a letter to all the historic property owners and let them know about this process. And it's really a two-part process. One is the, having demolition denial, and you did review that at your public hearing in August, and that's under Title 1740, Historic Overlay. And those changes allow the historic review board to deny a demolition request based on certain criteria, and that can be appealed to the city commission and further on appealed to Luba. But there are ability to make findings to deny that application. The second part of that is demolition by neglect though, because if the city just denied the demolition of buildings and a property owner didn't want to put any money into it, you just have neglected buildings to the point where one day you could make the findings for demolition and then the property owner was still waiting you out. It just was a longer process of wait out. So really, the second part of this we see is demolition by neglect, which is not part of Title 17. It actually is going into Title 15, which is our building code chapter. And you'll see in this packet, it's 15.25, which is, 15.24 is our dangerous building code, which Mr. Sperb, our building official utilizes to determine a dangerous building. That, that doesn't go away. What this does is this is in addition to 1524, for buildings that are currently designated historic structures. And there are about 400 in the city. That would be historic buildings in Kanema, designated structures with them in the Glaughlin District and landmarks located outside of the city. They would additionally have this put on them. This demolition by neglect process is done as, as sense, a code enforcement, if you want to think of it that way. And then through the code enforcement process, you come up with a stabilization plan. And if you can have a stabilization plan approved by the historic review board, then you move forward and with your stabilization plan. If the property owner does not want to cooperate with a stabilization plan, then the, this code gives the city the ability to send the property owner to municipal court. And where a potential court finds, and the last case scenario, which no one wants to do, but it's good to have on the books, is they could lean the property for the improvements. The goal for demolition by neglect is not to rehab the building. It is to resolve the specific measure that is causing the, the demolition by neglect. Is it open windows? Is it not putting a tarp over the, the roof because there was a fire? And by not tarping the roof, three months later of an Oregon winter, whatever potential the building may have had to be rehabbed is gone away. So the idea is to work with the property owner on a stabilization process, method, once a demolition by neglect has been identified, but knowing in our back pocket, if you have a property owner that does not want to cooperate, we have the ability to lean. The other part of this is if they truly have a building that is so expensive and just can, has so much that, that need to be done for the demolition by neglect stabilization plan, then there may be time for them to apply for the demolition and they may be able to meet the criteria for approval for a demolition. So that's really the out, to get outside of the demolition by neglect process, is you apply for a demolition permit and that of course can go to the city commission on appeal. So if a property is feeling that, that they don't have a recourse, they do. So we, we want to be able to get this early on in the process, have conversations with property owners. A lot of things can have easy stabilization. There may be some exterior bracing or things like... There may be some exterior bracing or things like tarping roofs or boarding up doors to get it to a point where stabilization, where hopefully somebody else can purchase the property and do a proper rehab. So that is what this full process is approved in. And once again, this is outside the land use process. So this would be the city staff, the building official, and the Historic Review Board in a small level, because they hold the initial hearing, just to allow all the parties to come together outside, not part of the land use, but to make the formal declaration that it is demolition by neglect. But anybody can request a demolition by neglect finding. So if you're a neighbor and you see a property that, that you think is going to demolition by neglect, you can work through the code enforcement process. But it's staff, the Historic Review Board and the building official that bring, would bring it to an actual hearing, if they believe that it meets the criteria for demolition by neglect.
It seems like the criteria, but just by reading the criteria, it seems like we've already allowed it to go to the point where it's a structural issue. And I guess my, you know, maybe that's what we have to do, but it seems to me like if we catch it, you said catch it early, I'd like to catch it earlier.
Well, you bring up a good point. A lot of times, buildings look a little threadbare, but they're actually structurally just fine. They really are. Once you get inside, they're, they're fine. They just aren't painted.
Sure.
But when you have this on the books, you can have those initial conversations with the property, and so, you know, we do have demolition by neglect. I don't want to see this building fall any farther. We do have the authority, you know, to make sure that doesn't happen. Let's talk about it now. So that's more of an outreach issue. Because you, as a building official, you know, we're not going to go into every, I mean, just because someone didn't paint the outside of their house for three years and it's looking in a little, a little gray and threadbare, we're not going in for demolition by neglect. I mean, Guy Spur, our building official, is going to have to say, this building is structurally compromised, or is going to be compromised very soon because of these measures. I mean, there has to be a specific reason for us to go down this process.
Mm-hmm. Well, and maybe I'm just being in the neighborhood, in the McLaughlin neighborhood, I've seen too many go that way and it concerns me a little bit, just, just by virtue of the fact that it, it has to go so far before it can be, before it can be taken care of. And code compliance is great, and if this gives us, if this gives Nancy and her team the power to go in there and say, you know, if something isn't done soon, you're getting into a situation where it could be structural, or it could be, the walls are going to, something could happen. I don't know how.
Yeah, that's a communication. If you bring it too far back, that's really an intrusion, and I think politically it would really.
Right.
Really backfire in the city. What we're trying to do with this is say, property owners, you can't sit there and let your building deteriorate for, on the purpose that you know you're going to demolish it. Or, or property owner that can't maintain their historic property, you know, we can work with them on stabilization methods and maybe work with them for selling it for someone who potentially could. I mean, we can work hand in hand and we can help property owners that can't understand, you know, what are the things they need to do. And it may be that selling it to another party to actually rehab it may be the best answer for a particular person.
Right.
Getting there at the point where you could actually sell it for value earlier on in the process.
Sure, and with as many seniors as we have, it becomes very difficult for them to, I can, you know, point out quite a few in the neighborhood that, you know, they are on their way. They are on their way.
And I guess the third leg of the stool is, we now have the Historic Matching Grant Program through the Historic Review Board. Finally, we've been able to give people financial incentives for historically designated properties. We're concentrating on window repair now, but, you know, if you have a building that has structural issues, we can give up to $3,000 to help with that. And so there are, you know, we recognize that if you are at a true demolition by neglect and there are structural issues for your foundation or, you know, load-bearing wall, we've written in, even though we want to see mainly exterior alterations, we have written in the ability to step in if that, that's the case, to use those funds.
Okay.
On a case, very case-by-case basis.
All right. Commissioner Nunn, you have a question?
Oh, I think the information guide you have here does a good job of, of doing the outreach, of trying to, you know, help out.
Yeah, and that's, that's the next step, is, you know, getting Nancy Bush to get these, having nice handouts given to property owners, adding it to the welcome wagon packet when new people own it, mailing it out to historic property owners.
Could you give me a rough idea of the, you know, how many cases are we talking about in a year's time? And just roughly, are we talking about 10 or 20?
Well, you know, it's, I mean, I hope to never actually have to use this code. I mean, that's in a perfect world. You know, I don't get that many that come to me, but I think a lot of people don't even know that's an option. So I, I don't see that. I mean, I, the McCarver House was a perfect example of demolition by neglect. If we would have had this 10 years ago, we may be able to have worked with the Powers family and let them know earlier on, but they, they just kind of waited it out and someone came in, but it might have changed the game plan a little bit differently with that. Another, you know, that's a good example. There are a couple others that I'm working with, the property owners, and right now, I, you know, it's really hard, because if I say, no, you can't do this, no, you can't do that, well, they have this thing in their pockets saying, oh, I'll just apply for the demolition. So it's a real delicate balance of how I work with the property owners on getting these things rehabbed. So this, kind of the demolition by denial, demolition by neglect and Historic Preservation Grant Program are kind of three very important legs to that stool.
The other things, when I started reading this, I didn't catch that it was for the historic district. Could the title reflect that demolition by neglect pertaining to historic district? Because that's, isn't that the only place you use it in the code?
Well, I guess in purpose, it's for historic structures, but yeah, we can, if you think that that's.
Or do you see in the future you would use it for other?
No, demolition by neglect is generally just for historic properties, because in a sense, by doing, you are historically designated, so you went through a separate process. When you put an extra review criteria on a new building, that brings up a lot of more land use issues, and I don't know if the city would want to go down that path of adding a new regulatory framework for buildings that have not gone through the historic designation.
Well, a couple things, just, again, the purpose, I would put on the first line, the purpose of this section is to safeguard, et cetera, et cetera. Instead of just saying safeguard, to kind of comply with the way you've done it. And in the applicability, I guess, isn't it true, a property, throwing the win out, it's saying, a property is, is a locally designated historic home. Essentially, every historic structure in Oregon City, this applies to that property. Can, I, that needs to be said there. I know it says it, but it's kind of a win, a win statement, rather, it should be a, I don't know.
No.
All right, that's cool.
And then stabilization process, the first A, it's missing a the, identification by the community development director. And then probably, I think after building official will identify, should be included there.
Under what section? I'm sorry.
A.
Section A under stabilization process, the first line, there should be, it's just.
Identification by community development and the building official that a building's condition.
No, whole 5-0, is that where you're at?
Yeah, I'm on A.
Identification by the community development director and the building official will identify that a building's condition falls. Yeah, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, just, just for curiosity's sake, now, you asked the question, what happens if you have a house that's not historically accurate or, or a historical designation, and it's in a, let's say it's up on the Rivercrest, facing the park?
Oh, yeah.
And it's not a historic home, but it's in that same situation and it's falling down, and where, where is the teeth to do something about that?
Well, you bring up a really interesting philosophical discussion about regulating nonhistoric properties as if they were historic properties. So you're now regulating something and adding value when it has never been inventoried. It never went through a process to designate it, or, and owner consent is required nowadays for designation of historic properties since 1995 or '06 by the legislature. And so we've had long discussions with our attorneys, and now you're adding a regulatory measure onto a property. You would have to make this a citywide for every single structure in Oregon City. You couldn't identify a building without going through an inventory and going through a selection process with criteria. In a sense, you'd be having a middle-tier designation, and then you're having Historic Review Board reviewing non-designated kind of historic building. I mean, if you're going to regulate, you need to regulate just historic buildings that have gone through that process, or require owner consent for new buildings, which is what, what we require now for all new historically designated properties, because they, historic owners can opt out. Or you regulate citywide. You, this basically pertains to every single building in the city.
Well, does dangerous buildings apply to every?
Well, see, dangerous buildings do, but the solution to dangerous buildings is get them demolished or fix them.
Oh, I see.
Well, it's code compliance.
Yeah, so what we're saying in this section is, fix it. Don't demolish it.
Because of its historic structure.
Because of its historic structure.
But, but, you know, as time goes on, the houses around the park.
But then they should be inventoried and added as a designated historic structure.
Exactly. And I guess my, that's my question, is at what point do, does that, do those homes become historic enough?
They could today, the problem is, is it's requires owner consent, and so one, that kind of the three-legged stool, the Preservation Grant Program, I think I spoke of this before, but Forest Grove, where we're modeling our program off of Forest Grove for their locally designated, and after they've had this program running for a couple of years, they went and inventoried a new neighborhood in Forest Grove for individual designation that required owner consent, and they had 50% owner consent. And the only reason they got that is because of the Preservation Grant Program. If you, if we would have done this and inventoried all the new historic buildings, we probably would have gotten 3% owner consent, because there's, you don't get anything out of being designated, you only, you only get more review. And maybe the cachet of being a historic building, but right now.
Well, you get protection. You get the protection of this policy in your neighborhood.
If you are a property, but if you, but if you are a property owner and you, and you are designated, because you have a nice 1930 Dutch Colonial in Rivercrest, but your five other neighbors aren't designated, how, you know, unless you give people carrots to the stick, they're not going to give consent to the stick. So what, what the Historic Review Board's long-range plan, now that we have this grant preservation program and we can kind of show these carrots, is we can do inventories of Rivercrest, over by the hospital in the Ely neighborhood, looking at Buena Vista, all these 1920s to 19, you know, 1940s subdivisions for Oregon City, that, that could easily be historically designated.
Yeah.
But we have to pay for the inventory, do the inventory, and we won't do it unless we have a, we feel that we have a good chance of getting a reasonable amount of owner consent.
Sure. Well, okay, thanks. You know, I, being in a neighborhood, you just, I mean, I, I appreciate so much the fact that we have these laws in effect that can protect our neighborhoods. We don't have to worry about things falling apart. We don't have to worry about that. I mean, there, there are processes in place. And if you, and if you're in a, if you think about that and you're in a neighborhood that currently isn't, hey, that, maybe that's not a bad thing for a neighborhood association to start thinking about.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's something, the Rivercrest can definitely work the Historic Review Board. We just felt until we got this grant program, it would have put a lot of work.
Oh, sure.
For very, very, very little reward.
I understand completely. It's just something to think about, and especially with neighborhood associations.
Yeah, well, it's in our comprehensive plan, one of our policies under the Historic Chapter, that we would like to, A, make McLaughlin a potential National Register Historic District, and make local districts out of the Rivercrest, Ely and potentially Buena Vista, if not add additional landmarks.
Right, yeah. Okay, well, I just wondered, wondered how that all played, so, thank you. There you go. Anything else?
And this doesn't have to go through this process, because it's Chapter 15, but we're going to bring it in, because it doesn't make sense to keep it as a separate review.
Okay. All right, anything else?
I want to make sure that we have a quorum for September 24th. We actually have a land use action on that Monday of Thanksgiving week.
November 24th.
November 24th.
Twenty-fourth. The State Farm Building up here on Buckner and Malala will be coming in for their conditional use and site plan, as well as bringing the code changes back to you. So for the three of you, and I'll probably be sending, or one of us will be sending an email just to verify, but we do have a pretty long, full meeting that, that night.
Okay, well, I'll be here.
I'll be here.
So it sounds like we've got a quorum, and I, you know, we can check with the other two commissioners.
Okay, and then I have an update for Main Street, if, since we are on cable and.
Sure.
Live streaming. Just to reintroduce to the Planning Commission, Main Street, Oregon City is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that went through the certification process this summer and was certified by the governor on September 26th as one of four performing Main Streets. The four performing Main Streets are Oregon City, Baker City, Roseburg, and, just blanking out on the third one.
Baker City.
Baker City, Roseburg, Oregon City and Albany. And there are also two other levels, transforming and exploring, and those are a little bit lower. What's really exciting is we were designated in this first wave, and so we're getting a lot of attention paid to us, whereas in the future, there'll be this kind of second and third wave, some of the more mainstream communities that have been Main Streets for a long time, such as McMinnville and Corbales, are going to be coming in. So it's very good that we got certified this first time. What we'll be doing in the Main Street, Oregon City this fall, the winter and spring, we've created three committees, and I encourage anybody to join them. The committees are Design, Economic Restructuring and Promotions, and the goal of these committees is really to perform the work plan. And our, these committees can be anywhere between five and 50 people. And not everybody's going to be right there at every single meeting, there might be a steering committee, but the goal is, we want all business owners downtown and even citizens of, throughout Oregon City to take a stake in the revitalization of Main Street. And there's little things you can do. You can be involved in promotion and help out at a summer concept series. You could be on the Design Committee and work on the new design guidelines, or work with our economic restructuring and helping existing business owners increase sales in their business, and with property owners finding the right tenant mix when they have vacancies. The National Trust will be coming out this November to work with us. Kathy LaPlante is from the National Trust, she's the outreach, our outreach people. And we're going to be getting a resource team from, that's hired from the state to do a multi-day resource analysis, needs analysis, and come back to us with their, their kind of market and economic analysis of Main Street. So I'm pretty excited this spring. Main One is a firm from out of Chicago that'll be going and doing all the Main Streets in Oregon for those four Main Streets. So I encourage anybody to go onto the City of Oregon City website, and there's a Main Street, Oregon City link, that's, that's a temporary website. The Promotion Committee will be working on a new Main Street, Oregon City webpage, which will be user-friendly and interactive and all the things you want for a Main Street organization. That's one of their proposals. At some point, the Design Committee, which was made up of Urban Renewal Commission members, elected officials, and just interested citizens, will be working on design guidelines for the Urban Renewal Matching Grant Program, and also giving directions on any future code changes. It won't be during this process, but any future code changes for redevelopment in downtown. So I'm the kind of staff liaison for the Design Committee. So we met last Thursday, and I had 16 very interested people ready to roll up their sleeves, and I encourage other people to join. I do know Promotions and Economic Restructuring want more people, and the contact person is Elizabeth Fowler, and her contact information is on the website.
Great, thank you for the update. I just wanted to mention that I was asked by the mayor to speak at a Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class two weeks ago as a representative of the Planning Commission. And the, the agenda was basically the importance of your government and the city and county government. And I was joined by the mayor, the city manager, ex-mayor Dan Fowler, let's see, don't want to miss anybody, but we had, Bill Kenimer was there from the county. They also spoke to Special Districts, the South Fork Water Board, and my opportunity was to talk to these young new leaders, and it was a very full class, about government and about how the Planning Commission works, you know, within, within the government and how we move things forward and, and the discussions that we have and the things that go on. So I wanted to say thank you very much to the Chamber of Commerce and to the mayor for allowing me to speak. I was, it was, it was very worthwhile to hear that all went on, and I think it's a wonderful program, and definitely, if you ever have a chance to participate, it's a, it's a great, great program. It's a, I'm not sure. It's a, I'm not sure how long it's, I think it's a six or eight-month program, and they go to a meeting a month, and they cover something new at every meeting. So, once again, thank you. I appreciate that. It was a great opportunity. Thank you. So if that's it, then I think we can adjourn. Thank you so much.
Oh, actually, we need to make a motion. We never did. Good call, to move L 0801.
Oh, you're right.
To September 24th.
Absolutely. Sorry about that. My fault. So it looks like we will need, oh, that's here, need a motion to move L 0801 forward to a date certain of November 24th, 2008.
So moved.
Commissioner Stein?
I will second it.
All right. Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Chair Person Pal?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All righty, thank you. Now we can adjourn. Thank you very much.